Welcome to the special town meeting for the town of Moorestown. If you are a Moorestown resident that is not registered to vote, see a poll worker outside the auditorium to register. Seated to my left on the dais are select board members Judy Bickford, Don McDowell, Christopher Palermo, Laura Streets, and Travis Sabasto.
Sabatasso.
Sabatasso. Also on the stage behind me is the town clerk, Sarah Haskins, and seated in the audience is the town administrator, Eric Dodge. I would ask, as I will do right now, for people to put their phones, either shut them off or put them in airplane mode. Could we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Troop 876 of Mooresville?
(inaudible)
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for the National Anthem, which will be sung by Morgan Reed.
(singing) Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed At the twilight's last gleaming Whose bus drives and bright stars Through the perilous fight For the ramparts we watched Were so gallantly streaming And the rocket's red glare That booms bursting in air Gave proof through the night That our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner wave For the land of the free And the home
Thank you, Morgan. Okay, people can sit now. By the way, my name is Chap Smith, and I am the elected moderator. I apologize for not wearing a tie. I actually thought that I had brought one with me from the office, and I don't have it, so I get demerit points for that. I apologize. The People's Academy Student Council is providing a bake sale in the hallway to support the ninth grade class, so if anybody is hungry, their dinner is being served, and it's right outside here. On behalf of the town of Moorestown, we want to thank the staff at People's Academy for their assistance in this special election, especially Michelle Walker for her coordination, Peter Geen and Green Mountain Access for their support with the audiovisual for the meeting. I also want to thank members of the town clerk's office and the Board of Civil Authority for their work. If you didn't notice, this meeting is being recorded and livestreamed to GMA TV YouTube channel, apparently very popular. Anyone wishing to speak must come forward to the microphone in the center aisle of the PA auditorium and state their full name before addressing the assembly. If you cannot get to the center aisle, a portable microphone can be brought to you. Also, if you are either making a motion or seconding the motion, would you please actually state your name when you do that, so that we can have an accurate record and so that Sarah can take down your name? Okay. I will bring the assembly to order, and I proclaim that the special town meeting of the town of Moorestown is declared open at 6:19 PM. So here are some of the rules of the game. To vote on articles, you must be a registered Moorestown voter. If you have not done so already, please pass through the checklist in the outside hallway and receive a colored voting ballot that you will show during a voice vote from the floor or deposit in the ballot box if a paper ballot vote is called. If a paper ballot vote is requested, you will be called upon by rows to vote and then given further instructions at the time on the procedure. This meeting is governed by Robert's Rules of Order. They are the basic rules of order for the meeting, except where Vermont law takes precedence. The body cannot change Vermont state law, but you can change Robert's Rules with a two-thirds vote if you desire. An article must be moved and seconded by the body, then restated by the moderator before it is under consideration and debate on the article may begin. After the moderator restates the motion, the person who made the motion has the right to speak first in the debate. Articles may have only one amendment at a time associated with them, and amendments to an article likewise may have only one amendment at a time associated with them. After you've spoken once on a particular article, you will not be recognized a second time during discussion on that article or amendment until all other voters who wish to speak on the issue for the first time are given an opportunity to do so. Robert's Rules only allows a given speaker to speak twice on a given motion and limits the duration of speeches to 10 minutes. Division of the House. A division of the House can be requested by one voter before or after a voice vote. Vermont state law provides for a paper ballot vote on the request of seven voters, unless the town has made other arrangements again before, after a voice vote, or after a division of the House. All motions, remarks, and discussion, including moving the previous question, must be addressed to the moderator. This is very important. I know that the issues that we're going to discuss bring with them a certain amount of passion. To have a civilized debate, the debate should flow through the moderator, not be directed to any particular individual. It makes it so that it's a less personalized debate. Anyone wishing to speak must come forward to the microphone in the center aisle and state his or her full name and speak into the microphone so that comments may be heard by the entire assembly. If you cannot get to the center aisle, a portable microphone can be brought to you. Your speeches must be confined to the merits of the question. You will not be allowed to engage in personal attacks on a member of the body or their motives. Vermont state law prohibits consideration of articles that have not been warned. This means you can't amend warned articles such that they would deal with business that hasn't been warned. Reconsideration of an article is allowed by Vermont state law until a point is reached where the body has been working on another article. This means that if you have voted down an article, a motion can be made to reopen consideration of this article by a person on the prevailing side. So, for example, if you voted no on a particular article and that article was defeated and you decided that you wanted to reconsider it, you would be able to do so because you voted no. But if you had voted yes, you would not be able to vote to reconsider. However, once the next article is on the floor, no more action can be taken regarding the previous article at this meeting. My role as moderator is to help you accomplish the business you intend to do. Please ask questions if you don't understand what is happening, or if you think what is happening is wrong for some reason, or if you want to do something but you don't know how to proceed. Please tell me if you feel I am ruling improperly. You have the right to challenge the moderator's ruling. Only registered voters of the town may vote, as we discussed before. Non-residents and unregistered voters may be allowed to speak with the approval of two-thirds of the assembly. During a voice vote, please remain silent. Additionally, you may not raise your hands. I think what is meant to be said is during a voice vote, please remain silent except if you are voting, right? Additionally, you may not raise your hands or stand if a physical count is required. We appreciate your cooperation. So copies of the published warning are available at the check-in tables. Are there any errors or corrections to be noted in the published unofficial warning? Anybody notice any errors or corrections? Seeing none, unless there is an objection, I will waive the reading of the entire articles. Is there any objection to that? Okay. So I had written this at the top of my notes, but I forgot to mention it. So the fire marshal would like us to let you know where the exits are. Emergency exits here and here. They're at the back. And then in the balcony, there are exits where the exit signs are in the back of the balcony. And for those who are in the cafeteria, please look for the exit signs. Okay. We will now proceed to act on Article One. Do I have a motion? Let me step back for a second. Motions have to be in the positive for consideration. So the motions will be to adopt a particular article. That doesn't mean that you have to vote for it, but to have it considered, it has to be moved in the positive, and at that point in time, you can vote yes or no. All right? So Article One, shall the voters authorize the construction of sidewalks on Jersey Heights? Any remaining balance should be used for sidewalk operating expenses in an amount not to exceed $200,000 to be financed over a period not to exceed five years. Do I have a motion to adopt Article One?
(inaudible)
There's been... Please say...
Spencer.
Is there a second?
Second. Rich Jacobs.
So there's been a motion and a second to adopt Article One. Is there a debate? Todd?
(inaudible).
Yes, yes.
Very briefly, my name is Todd Thomas. I'm your zoning administrator and planner, town resident. I have handouts for anyone who wants that show plans for the sidewalk and also the budget for the sidewalk, and I can answer some quick questions, get some factual information about the proposed sidewalk. The sidewalk, for those who don't know, goes from what was A Street, B Street, which is now Feline Loop at the bottom of the hill from the police station. The whole sidewalk goes out to the connection to the pedestrian underpass to Bishop Marshall under the truck route where the light is at the intersection. The sidewalk funds we're talking about tonight, contrary to what you heard on Front Porch Forum and elsewhere, is not for developers. It's for three single-family homes and a village property. So there are four segments of sidewalk that this funding would go towards. It goes towards a new segment of sidewalk in front of the Village Pump Station, which is the very bottom of the hill, next to Feline Loop, which was the old A Street, B Street. And the sidewalk continues there past Mike Alexander's house, which is the greenhouse that generally, for some reason, Mike has a ladder on it a lot. I think he works in his house a lot. Then the sidewalk goes up the hill past Bob Heney's house, which is the three-story yellow house. And then the last segment that the sidewalk money looks to fund is in front of Jason MacArthur's house, which is across the street, a little bit further up, at the intersection of Jersey Heights and Jersey Way, which is the blue house, the single-story blue house there. So again, the sidewalk looks to put sidewalk... The sidewalk article looks to put sidewalk in front of the Village Pump Station, where no one else is going to build it, and then three single-family homes. And that, those segments, the segment from the bottom of the pump station up past Bob Heney's house connects to existing developer-built sidewalks, and then Jason MacArthur is the only missing connection of developer-built sidewalks that'll be built this summer. So if everything goes to plan, and this is funded, which it may or may not be, you'll have a seamless sidewalk maybe as early as this fall from the Village out to the Bishop Marshall pedestrian underpass. And if it's okay, Chap, I'll just pass those documents out and let people take them if they want.
Sure.
And happy to answer any questions later, but this is my one time speaking, I think. Thank you.
Are there other questions or comments? Rachel?
This one?
I think you can use either one. No, that one.
The shorter one.
No, the other one, I think, because that's...
The taller one. The taller one. My name is Rachel Duffy, and I have somewhat of a historical question related to this sidewalk. It's several years ago, the sidewalk on Park Street, I understand, was in bad repair and torn up. And my understanding, there were some residents who very much wanted that sidewalk rebuilt. So I don't... If you could clarify the priorities, why this new sidewalk and why the other one did not get rebuilt when there were families with great concern there? Thank you.
I'll take some of that. I'll answer the best I can, Rachel. The sidewalk on Park Street, we were going to be doing a sidewalk survey. It was in the budget that was defeated. That decision was made earlier this year to do a complete survey of all the sidewalks in the community. The sidewalk on Jersey Heights has been in process, and I'd like someone else to speak to this because I don't have all these details.
Very quickly, this sidewalk on Jersey Heights started under Senator Jeffers. Senator Jeffers was before Bernie Sanders was a senator. This is the last effort to get this project across the finish line. So this sidewalk has been in the works, partly constructed for about 20 years now, long before the sidewalk on Park Street was taken up by the road crew. Thank you.
Yes. I've got somebody coming up, and then you can be next.
Okay, so I'm Pat Michelson. I live on...
Can you speak into the microphone? Thanks.
I'm Pat Michelson. I live on Park Street. My question is, why aren't you going after grants? There is a lot of money for sidewalks, safe sidewalks. At the end of Park Street, there's a special needs school. I gave the select... We're not attacking anybody. Information for getting grants, and so that's my question. Why aren't you going after grants?
I'm not in a position right now to answer that question, but right now, we're here to talk about Article One, not about other sidewalks in the community.
So we are... It is true that we are here to talk about the sidewalk on Jersey Heights. I think it's appropriate to ask questions about other alternative sources of funding that have been explored for funding the sidewalk. This, the Jersey Heights one.
So that's my question. Have you explored... I'll rephrase it. Have you explored grant money from the state?
Yep. So can someone speak to...
No. All right. Well, I would suggest that you did.
Yes.
(inaudible). Can Todd answer that question?
Sure.
Yes, grant money has been explored. If you look at the back of your last sheet in the handout, that's the budget for the project. If we use grant money, the money part that's in gray comes into play. Grant money generally makes sidewalks more expensive. The sidewalk that was built... The sidewalk was built in two segments, really, from east, from the top of the hill by the police station down to the bottom of the hill where it sits now. And we're trying to build from the bottom of the hill, the missing segments, out to Bishop Marshall. The top of the hill, we spent more money in our 10% match than what it cost us to build a sidewalk with local dollars using federal money. Federal money is very expensive. Grants are very expensive. There are no free lunches. So this is the most affordable way we can build the sidewalk connections is what's in front of you tonight. Thank you.
Hi. I really don't think that it makes sense to make a decision on this before we know whether or not, if defeated or withdrawn, it could be placed on the upcoming paper ballot. So I move that consideration be postponed until after consideration of Article Two.
So there is a motion to postpone consideration of Article One until after Article Two. That motion is appropriate. It would require a two-third... Let me just... My recollection is that it does actually require a two-thirds of the assembly approval.
(inaudible).
Yes.
Do you have to have a second on that? When do you have to have a second?
You do have to have a second on it, but I just wanted to... There is a second. Yep. I wanted to clarify that the motion was appropriate. So the motion has been made to postpone consideration of Article One until after Article Two. That motion is appropriate, and it has been seconded and requires a two-thirds majority vote.
And if I may speak to that, I'll just reiterate.
You may.
I think it would be very helpful in deciding how to vote on Article One to know what the effect of that would be, whether or not it could be considered on the paper ballot or whether or not it would have to be brought back in another in-person meeting next year. So I hope that people will vote to postpone consideration.
Is there any other debate on postponing the order of consideration of the articles? Seeing none, all those in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it. The ayes.
(inaudible). A report from the cafeteria?
Oh.
I was going to say that we have cafeteria.
Chap, there's a delay between when you talk and what people in the cafeteria hearing. About 40 seconds, I would say.
Right. There's been a delay of about 30 years between what my kids hear and what I say.[1428.23][1428.23](laughter) Yes.
My name is...
I don't think we can discuss...
No, I just...
We're in the middle of a vote.
Right. And I'm talking about the vote.
Well, no, we've actually started the vote.
I know. But I don't believe it should be done by voice because some people can yell louder than others.
Are you asking for a division?
And it should be paper ballot.
Paper ballot? Are there seven individuals who would support paper ballot? It will be by paper ballot? Okay, so hold on one second. It's going to hold a... Can you tell them that it's paper ballot? It's going to be by paper ballot? So if people could just wait, we've got to get ready with people standing at the voting booth, and we also, as you come up and cast your ballot, you will get another ballot so that when the... If there's another vote by paper ballot, you will have a paper ballot. So you'll exchange one for the other. Okay?
Chap, can you clarify what he asked both of you?
Excuse me?
Could you clarify what he asked both of you?
Okay, to clarify, for those who have a question, the question in front of us is, shall consideration of Article One be postponed until consideration of Article Two? A yes? A yes means to postpone. A no means that you vote not to postpone.
(inaudible).
Excuse me?
Article Two.
Article Two is, shall the town of Moorestown adopt all budget articles by Australian ballot pursuant to 17 VSA Section 2680C? Okay?
So what, we do it on the same ballot?
We do not do it on the same ballot. One question at a time. Okay, so what we're going to do to make this orderly... We're just waiting for everybody to get organized. And I'm going to call by rows.
Chap, I have a question.
Okay, there is a question? Yes.
We got to go get the ones that we need to exchange.
(inaudible). Question Two, Chap, has he brought up anything on Australian ballot tonight, or does that have to wait until next year?
There is not going to be an Australian ballot tonight on that question, and I... It is not clear... Well, let me just... Let me say, if we postpone to consider it, if we vote to postpone consideration until consideration of Article Two, it will be up for vote after consideration of Article Two. I can't say what will happen then. That will be up to the body to determine whether they want to consider it or take some other action.
(inaudible).
Okay.
They need to have that question keyed in so they can know exactly what they're voting on.
Okay.
And the scoring down there, I think, about...
This is a little complicated because we have people in two rooms, so please humor us. It and, because there's a 40-second delay. So what I've been asked to do is to repeat what is being voted on. The question in front of the body is, shall consideration of Article One be postponed until after consideration of Article Two? That is the question before the body, and to pass, it requires a two-thirds vote of the body. Are we ready? So, if you need a place to write and check your ballot, there are places there to, uh, with pencils to fill out your ballot, um, and the ballot box is right in the stairs up to the, um, to the stage. So, I'll call row one. Row one is here. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna have the people along the wall go last, just so that you know. Okay?
Ed. Hey, Ed. Can somebody tell me when row one is done? Just let me know when row one is done.
Row two. Row three. Row four.
So, I think, sorry, there's merit in one, there's, there's logic, it's not totally... Oh, yes, you are allowed to.
Row five.
We're voting at both boy, both vo-
Row six.
Nice job, thank you.
And, and we're so confused.
My change.
Oh, no, yes, that wasn't my question. I thought he asked the question. He said, so if this says votes yes, does this mean now the next, all four things are now voted on by Australian ballot, united?
Oh, no, no.
Right, so then we're doing this for nothing? We're just flip-flopping one and two?
Yeah, right now, that's kind of a flip-flop.
Row seven. Yes. Um, Peter? Row seven, and please exit to the right when you finish, so that people can hand you their ballots.
Row seven.
Row seven. Row eight. Shaq? Row ten. Oh, excuse me, row nine.
Row eleven.
So, when your row gets called, can you exit to my right and then filter back, or come back through, uh, to the left? It'll just make the flow a lot easier. Okay? Okay.
There, yeah, that's fine. There, um, I'm not gonna call.
Row twelve. Aren't you guys row eleven?
We were ten, but they miscalled it.
Okay.
People understand, it's a progression.
We'll figure it out.
While we're in, while I land here, can they open the doors? There's no air moving here. Or is it too loud?
I'll have to ask them for decellator. Next row. We are bringing a ballot box up to the balcony. So, sit tight.
Nobody knows.
Uh-oh, did I do the entrance?
Will we vote on Amendment One after it?
That's how it's currently structured, yes.
Why are we voting on Amendment Two if we're gonna vote for Amendment One anyway? Okay, I'd like to change this, throw it out, can I still get a blue card?
You can, as long as you drop that in the box.
Next row, please.
I'm good, and you?
This is your last meeting day in Moorestown.
I, I, no, no, they're fine. Next row, please. Next row, please.
People, people in the way back.
Anybody who hasn't voted, um, could you please come up and get on the, uh, get in line to my right? Anybody who hasn't voted, could you please come up and get on the, get in line to my right?
Yeah, but do we have to listen to the, if you're, if you're getting this call? Maybe they're just trying to execute the law. I'm asking you, are we going to vote on the sidewalk thing? What? He told me right, or? So he needs to know. Who is, Shaq? Shaq? Listen, are we going to, um, or are you guys just trying to use the bathroom? I'm just asking. Because God's going to let out all the other people. So how long is it? Okay, you could tell me that. How is he that? How is he that? Is he? What is he taking? He did his great. He's kicking my ass at engineering. I'm shocked. Yeah, he did too, so.
Has everyone voted yet? If anybody hasn't voted, you have another two minutes. Yeah, and if you're unable to come to the front, raise your hand and somebody will come and get your ballot. One of the Board of Civil Authority members. Voting is closed.
Yeah, separate, they're going to put in piles of 25.
Nikki was just asking, maybe, but I can't get.
Yeah, it's just sorting yes and no.
So Sarah, these have both been checked twice.
Okay, in there, 25? Okay.
Piles of 25 checked twice.
Second check on 25. I have, I have 21. 10, there are 10 guesses.
Sarah, it's another check twice.
You need double count. Okay, has, has it been double counted?
On the double count.
Someone's double counted this? That's double counted? Well, count the blanks. Ben had a choice.
This one's been double checked.
Double check.
45 here.
I have, I have a... Any more guesses? Any more guesses?
14.
Uh, yes. I have 17. 14, I have 17. Any more? Yes, it's not, it doesn't have a vote on its poll.
25.
No, 17.
Good, I'm going to the back of the cafeteria. Remember it's late, but you want to hear it. You got it ready, I can wait.
I'll be later. I'll be instantly looking at ideas about it.
You ready? Yep, thank you. Always.
The last one of us, but we'll see.
Huh?
Please listen to the results here for your vote. The vote was on. The question, shall consideration of Article 1 be postponed until consideration of Article 2? Two-thirds of the votes necessary to pass. Those voting yes, 231. Those voting no, 142. 62% of the body voted yes. 66 and 2/3% was necessary for it to pass. The motion fails. So, question is, before the body is, shall Article 1 be approved? Is there, are there questions or debate? Yes.
My folks?
Yeah, can you please come to the microphone? Nope.
This one?
Yeah, we can, we'll bring the microphone to you.
About for pass?
We won't be throwing it. And, and please remember that we are on a delay for the cafeteria. So when you're finished, I'm going to give a little bit of, I'm going to give 40 seconds after you're done speaking so that they can digest what you've said, okay?
My name is Joey Throne. I read through the handout and I also saw some of this that was online. This is a much better copy of what I could see from online. There are several inconsistencies here that maybe you can help me understand. One is, the vote that we're voting on tonight is for a $200,000 budget. Yet, on the last sheet, it appears that the total cost, estimated cost, is $307,000. Am I reading this incorrectly?
Hold on, Todd. Well, actually, I think you can answer. It'll be delayed and we'll give some time until next.
The actual cost of the sidewalk construction will probably be at $155,000. The, it says 157 here. 200 was asked for, there's one developer property that's come online since then time. The gray, you're asking about the difference in the cost, the $307,000. This is what we need to do if we use grant funds. We use state funds or federal funds, all these additional costs come into play. We don't need to spend this money if we use local dollars instead, so. Yes, there are grant funds out there, but the project becomes much more expensive when you use grant funds. So, things like stormwater time, the traffic control, we can do that in-house locally. We don't need to spend that money using local dollars. So the engineer, this is an engineering cost estimate from Mumley Engineering. He's saying the town can do it for 157, but if we use state funds or federal funds, the project can balloon to $307,000. But we're not using state, federal funds, we're just talking about a town appropriation to complete the four missing links of the sidewalk. Those four properties.
Okay, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
On the explanation sheet, the second paragraph talks about concrete sidewalks with granite curbs. Now, I know the town requirements state that in residential areas, bituminous sidewalks may be utilized. And I think that maybe the granite, or the, rather, the, the concrete sidewalks came into play initially because I think you changed the town requirements for sidewalks in the residential area. So I'm just looking to see whether bituminous sidewalks would be objectionable in this area as there are some existing bituminous areas there now that people use as sidewalks. Also, the idea of the granite curbs, according to the, the town's requirements. Granite curb is, is needed if you do not, if you cannot provide a two-foot, a minimum two-foot planting strip. I think you have many areas there where you can get a two-foot planting strip and eliminate the need for granite curb, which is quite expensive.
I do think there were some questions there. Does somebody want to, from the slot board, want to take that?
So thank you for that question. I asked that very same question when I first came on this board and we began talking about the sidewalk project because obviously pavement, bituminous asphalt is much less expensive. But in that area, according to the sidewalk regulations, and it's pretty extensive. Sure you can get a, I didn't bring a copy with me, otherwise I'd give it to you. In that area, it is required that the sidewalk to be constructed needs to match the sidewalk that, that's there. And in that district, it requires concrete versus bituminous asphalt. So that's why the, the proposal is for asphalt, excuse me, concrete versus asphalt. I, I, I don't have the answer to the two-foot green space and perhaps Todd can speak to that?
The sidewalk was scoped by V-Trans. This is what V-Trans, we came up with in the plan. So this process has gone on for years. This is the finish line. The, the selected, the select board selected the town road policy, tight sidewalk policy, excuse me, which was granite curbs and concrete sidewalks. It wasn't until the last, maybe six months, the select board started putting bituminous in their policy. So this project started with concrete and granite curbs. So, this project started with concrete and granite curbs, and it's always, the towns always required that from developers and everyone else, until most, till maybe this summer, the select board started putting bituminous in their policy. But per the policy, concrete and granite curbs are required on this road, because that's what the developers have built. We're trying to match what's there in kind.
Todd, what about the two-foot grass strip? He spoke, asked about a two-foot grass strip.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes, the, the question for the two-foot grass strip, it was scoped by V-Trans. We've been approved sidewalk scoping site from V-Trans. It was approved in this forum with the, with the curb. It wasn't approved with the grass strip. We have to go back to V-Trans, I believe. I'd have to check with that. I can't answer that definitively, but I'm pretty sure I need to go back and reopen up the state scoping process to change it to a grass strip.
So, that, that would mean a delay if you had to go back and make changes?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
The question has been called. It has been seconded. Hold on one second. Question has been called. So, that actually requires a two-thirds vote, my apologies. It's been a little bit, so the question is, in front of us, question has been called, it has been seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no? The question has been called. Calling the question means that there will be no further debate. And it means that we will go directly to the consideration of Article One. Okay? And I'm also cognizant of the fact that we have the forty-second delay. So. Forty seconds from now? Question has been called, and it has been seconded. It's a motion to call the question, requires a two-thirds majority for, for it to pass. And what it means is, if it's successful, the debate will stop on Article One. Everybody understand that? Questions? We are, because of the delay, apologize. This, this is more complicated than used to, because I'm used to the gym. So, all those in favor of calling a question, please say aye. All opposed, nay? We definitely have two-thirds here. So, I will wait to hear from the walkie-talkie. Yes. Donnie Blake. All right, so the question has been called. We will now vote on Article One. Let me repeat what Article One is. Reads, shall the voters authorize the construction of sidewalks on Jersey Heights? Any remaining balance should be used for sidewalk operating expenses in an amount not to exceed $200,000 to be financed over a period not to exceed five years. Yes is approval of Article One. No is a vote to defeat Article One. All those in favor of Article One, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, nay? In this room, the nays appear to have it. We'll wait. So, the question is, shall Article One pass? And the nays appear to have it. So, Article One fails. Article Two. Question is, shall the town of Moorestown adopt all budget articles by Australian ballot pursuant to seventeen VSA Section 2680 Subsection C? Do I have a motion? Could you identify yourself? There's been a motion to approve Article Two. Is there a second?
Second, James Brewster.
Article Two has been moved and seconded. Is there debate?
There might be questions in the cafeteria.
Yeah, I mean, before we do that, it would be nice to give the forty-second delay people an option. Questions in the cafeteria? Can you let me know if the cafeteria has questions? This is how democracy was designed. Can't find the humor in it.
It's really a show.
He would have been a great show.
Oh, my gosh.
Oh, my gosh.
Ed, do they have any questions?
That's ten times what they were. That's ten times what they were.
So, many inch worth?
Their value as a corporation. And what they get for selling is ten times what they are worth as a corporation. It's too bad that they didn't require them to admit that they.
So, there's no debate. You ready for the question? The question is, shall Article Two, which reads, shall the town of Moorestown adopt all budget articles by Australian ballot pursuant to seventeen VSA Section 2680C pass? You ready for that question? So, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, nay? We do have to wait.
Ever since I was pretty young, I loved having, you know, people came together, half a school budget, seventeen million dollar school budget, not a world. We talked about a $12,000 lawn mower to, to go over the ball field. We'd spend an hour talking.
Oh, the appropriations. Always, always. That's the only thing I can all, all do.
But, you know, there's so few people now that want to really participate in town. So, it's just really different.
Okay, can you find out whether? Okay, Article Two passes. Article Three. Shall the town of Moorestown elect its town officers by Australian ballot pursuant to seventeen VSA Section 2680B? Do I have a motion? Second? Any debate? Can you just make sure they know? On the motion. I'm going to just call a vote. I'm just going to do the vote. Okay, all those in favor of adopting Article Three, which is, shall the town of Moorestown elect its town officers by Australian ballot pursuant to seventeen VSA 2680B, please say aye. All opposed, nay? It has been, I, I actually spoke into the. Article Three has been adopted. Article Four. Shall the town of Moorestown vote on all public questions by Australian ballot pursuant to seventeen VSA Section 2680D? Do I have a motion? Excuse me? Okay, yep, Susan, sorry. Sorry about that. Uh, is there a second? Yes. Is there any debate? I'm going to just. It's been moved and seconded. All right, so the question is, shall Article Four, which reads, shall the town of Moorestown vote on all public questions by Australian ballot pursuant to seventeen VSA Section 2680D? Pass. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, nay? The ayes in this room have it. Give us forty seconds. Can you check with them, Ed? Are we ready, Ed? Article 4 passes. This concludes the warned articles, there being no further business to come before the special meeting of Town of Moorestown. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. But, so moved, seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay? I appear to have it.